So it's Dean and Peter. Dean made the motion, Peter's in. You're in, is that right?
Okay. Okay, do we have any public appearances? All right, CNN, move to consent agenda.
Good approval of consent agenda presented.
I want to pull the contract off, just because I have a contract.
Well, let's second it again and discuss it.
Yeah.
Okay, second.
Discussion?
I don't have a discussion.
You just asked to pull it off.
Just asked to pull it off now.
Yeah, I'd like to pull out the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperation Agreement, because I have questions. I'm going to scroll down the rest of it.
Okay, so we have an approval for one, items one, two, three, and four on consent agenda. So we have a first.
There's the votes, yeah.
And a second, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, let's move to consent agenda number five. Susan Manning, we have one discussion.
So, Dan, I just wondered if this is a contract we've had before, or is this a new contract?
This is an annual contract.
Okay, and we do it all the time, and it's already in the math and all those guys. Okay.
Fine, I make a motion to approve the resolution of the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative Agreement.
No, we have discussion.
We have discussion. Here and then, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Recognition information?
Normally I have a list of student staff recognition. I don't have a formal group tonight. We got a little bit tied up in our office last couple of days on some other communications, and so we'll make sure we double up next month.
There's one. Should, but one thing I think, and I know you're going to do that again next month, but I think we should recognize the PTO and your incredible donation that is listed in the consent agenda. So minimally, I'd like to thank the PTO for their contribution. It's really awesome.
And I would like to, we lost a good friend, found a member of forever friends in Cottage Grove, and I was one of the members when we first started, and it's heartbreaking for me right now, and so just hold it. I just, I'd like a moment of silence, and we can move on, please. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Mike, just real briefly as well, as you know, Andrew mentioned, you know, very sad by the loss of Ann Nader, and Ann was also one of our founding members of our Parent Equity Council, and so someone a true advocate for the children in this school district, and certainly will have a lasting impact on all of us moving forward.
I feel these sorelynesses.
Okay, moving to correspondence. We have no correspondence. All right, we'll move to administrative reports. Technology Service Update, Lisa Height.
We have actually a team of educators that are going to be joining Troy and Lisa to give a presentation on what is happening in our schools, technology related, so welcome, and I'll let you guys introduce yourselves.
Perfect. Thanks for the opportunity tonight. I haven't gotten to talk to you in a while, and I appreciate it. I was actually remarking that, I'm glad it's still light outside, I'm getting excited about that. So I'm going to be pretty brief, because we've got three wonderful people here to share some really exciting things that are going on in the classroom, and Lisa has a few things to say as well. So just real quick, update you on mobile access. Excitingly enough, this year at the K-2 level, teachers now have access to iPads at a one-to-one ratio, so we've gained some momentum, in particular with a program called Apple Classroom through the iPads. Allows the teachers to personalize learning a little bit better through apps with the iPad, as well as, you know, accessibility features, et cetera, so we're very excited about that. Kind of in year three with the one-to-one Chromebooks, we're really seeing progress, no longer using those just to share documents. Teachers are really starting to dig in and try and personalize education with those devices as well. Something exciting that's going on in the district this year, we have an interactive flat panel pilot. What is that, you ask? So we're finding a solution, or attempting to find a solution, to replace our aging and dying smartboards throughout the district, which are in our 4K through 5th grade classrooms. I see Elizabeth shaking her head yes. Unfortunately, you know, hardware only lasts so long, so we've got to find a solution as those smartboards die. And we have 18 participating staff. I identified two models early on through quite a few demos with vendors, which is always fun. So we're through phase one, we're into phase two, where we've switched the models. All the participants are trying out both models, giving feedbacks through survey, informal visits, those types of things. Middle towards third week of April, we're going to get together, talk about those two models. What does that look like going forward? Do either of those models meet our needs? And if so, what do we need to do is start getting those into classrooms to replace smartboards. A third one is really important, student data privacy, something that I'm trying to catch up on. Working with those three groups that are listed up there, the Student Data Privacy Consortium, Wisconsin Student Privacy Alliance, and the DPI, now have a template that you can use to work with vendors. And vendors, if they are smart, they will sign this template and work with you, and agree to keep that data that you're transferring to their software, to their servers, private, and really ensure that student data stays safe throughout that process. So we have an agreement right now with five different vendors, kind of working our way through all the software that we use, and making sure we get those agreements in place, whether it's paid or free. So even if it's something we don't pay for, but we use fairly heavily, we're contacting those vendors and ensuring that any data that's inputted to that software, that application, remains safe throughout that process. Yeah?
I would also strongly recommend that you look at the BA Business Agreement under HIPAA. Those templates and formats have been now used for over 10 years, and they continue to be refined and developed, but the components are required by federal law. So, and again, what's interesting about those concepts is that the Wisconsin law is more stringent than the federal law, so it, in the one situation it controls. So when we write those business agreements, and those were all together by legal counsel, they're really excellent documents, so just another resource to it.
Perfect, yeah, the more the better, absolutely. So I'm going to stop talking, and then Lisa take it next. Thank you.
Great. It's the first time we've had to do a stand and present, so I guess we'll just follow suit. All right, so you're aware that we have a district strategic plan that has a particular goal area called Leveraging Technology to Enhance Teaching and Learning. So thank you to Troy for talking about sort of acquisition and infrastructure related to technology. We're going to shift a little bit to technology in the realm of teaching and learning. So we have a district technology committee, and that committee is made up of the librarian, library media specialist from every school, as well as a classroom teacher, and then some district representation, and we work together to talk about what are, used to be called our District Tech Plan, and now it's our Digital Learning Plan, in essence, really, how technology can shape the teaching and learning in our district. So what you have in front of you, and linked into your board docs, are some resources that show what is guiding our conversations, and pieces of the framework for our Digital Learning Plan. The Wisconsin DPI has embraced the digital learning gears from Future Ready, and specifically, we're looking at Gear One in our district tied to instruction, learning, and assessment. And then also, the DPI has put out the Information and Technology Literacy Standards, and you see the elements of those also in this document. You can link into the standards specifically. And so the approach we're taking is if you read the digital learning gears, they're sort of pretty broad, and as a teacher, I would probably ask, like, what does that mean for me in the classroom? But the Information and Technology Literacy Standards really break down the components of that into pieces that are recognizable and usable for teachers, but there's a lot in there. So we're going through a process of sort of prioritizing which of those standards have the most impact and at what grade levels. So that's just a little bit of our ongoing work for the Digital Learning Plan. Now I'll turn it over to the actual teachers in the classroom working with technology, and they'll give you some examples of how student learning is impacted using technology.
Hi, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Wodenski. I'm the librarian at Taylor Prairie. I'm going to talk briefly about how this app called Seesaw has changed the way our teachers communicate with their families. It's a three-way communication app, so it allows teachers and students to create multimedia posts, and then it allows families to see them almost immediately through the app at home or at work. And it's different from something like Infinite Campus, because they are multimedia posts, and they're far more informal. So I've got some examples up, so you can see, they really allow families to see into the classroom and see learning in the moment. And our teachers will tell you that parents are watching in the moment, because almost immediately after sending home an image, they get a like, or a comment, or a private message back. The examples I'm sharing on the bottom, the one on the left is from a 4K teacher, and every week she takes a picture of each center, and then sends it home, so families can see the five centers her children are rotating through. And then on the right, that's a student-generated post, and that student was at their math center and just documenting their thinking, so that their teacher and their family could see it. And what this really allows is for families to deepen their conversations with their kids about classroom learning. So you can imagine, like, we all know the kid, that when they get off the bus, and you're like, "How was school?" They're like, "Uh, fine." But parents can say, "Oh, well, I noticed today you were working on math, and you were decomposing that big number, 280. Tell us more about it." So our teachers and our families are responding really positively to the app. I think one way I can really quantify what our engagement looks like is through our statistics. So we have over 400 families connected, which is huge, because we have 368 students, I believe. So we're in every home essentially. And those bottom two numbers are really big, but they show our last three years, so we've used this app for three years. And over that amount of time, we've had 42,000 families visit the app and engage with it. We've also uploaded 37,000 items, which is like epic. I was trying to figure out, like, the math, like, how many items is that a day? If we look at just throughout the year, that's about 30 items a day over the course of three years. And there's just two more really nice visuals there. One is of a kindergarten classroom newsletter. So in this world where we get hit with emails all the time, how nice to get that visual format that really allows you to just see the essential things you need to know about your classroom that week, like, don't forget it's pajama day on Friday, or this is what we're learning in literacy this week. And the very bottom is one way I use the app. As a librarian, I use it to send home storytimes, and I record stories, but I also invite guest readers from our school, because we know our tiny littles are watching tons of videos, but this way, they're seeing, like, really quality content from people in their community. I think that's all I'm going to say now, but I'm open to questions. Yes.
Is the Seesaw app the same or similar to, like, the Class Dojo app? It's just a different type. Okay. And you're using the Seesaw at Taylor Prairie, but they're using Class Dojo at others, like Winniequa? Is that correct?
Winniequa is not using one specific app building wide.
Okay, so it's teacher-dependent, then?
Yes.
Gotcha. And Taylor Prairie, it's school-wide, they're all using the same?
Yes, we began just with individual teachers using it. The first two years, it was kind of an optional app. The third year, we decided to pay for the subscribed version, and now it's used in every single one of our 4K to first grade classrooms. It's also used in related arts, so art, music, and PE and library also utilize it. I also know it's used by speech in off-site 4K locations to communicate with families.
How does this relate to the issue of publicizing pictures of students who have written non-consent?
That's a great question. First, I can say that all Taylor Prairie students currently have consent to be publicized, but Seesaw is private. So each classroom has its own code that is only provided to the Infinite Campus-approved family members, who can then join, and at any given time, a teacher can change that code and distribute if we ever feel like it's compromised.
So only teachers and parents?
Yes.
I guess I'm thinking about, again, with the healthcare piece, more of an urgent condition. You had an incident where you needed to protect whether or not this child was in school on that day. So the teacher would have to adapt to that.
Yes, and we also have a few administrators. Evan administrator, Troy is an administrator, and our principal is administrator, and if we ever need to address something like that, we can go in and edit any post that's ever been made.
So it isn't actually live, it's edited?
It's live, but if I needed to take care of a student, I could go in and remove anything that needed to be.
But wouldn't I have already seen it?
Yes.
So that, so technically, one of the issues we have to continue to address is protection of a protected student. Okay. Sometimes that's, again, isn't that an issue with the pictures and...
Right. So we get consent from parents?
Yes, there is an opt-out process also.
Okay, and I guess what I'm talking about, Taylor Prairie, you have all the consents, but in the past, we haven't had all the consents. We've had to single out certain students that did not have consents. And then we did have an event where we absolutely had to be protective of the information about whether or not that student was in school. So if the father had seen that on the app, that would have been dangerous to the child.
Yes, but I hope that we would have allowed that family to opt their child out ahead of time, and we could have assured that they were not present.
Oh, it was an emergency. So again, I just think we have to be cautious.
Wouldn't you have, maybe not, but wouldn't you have the ability, if that, if a situation like that arose, and the principal comes down to you and says...
Close down the app.
Close down the app for these classrooms.
Yes.
I mean, that would be, that's how I would think you would handle that for that day. I mean, that's not that hard.
I'm just looking for reassurance that we can do it, and we would do it.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think maybe, to clear it up, kids cannot send the posts out. All posts are moderated by their teacher before it can go out to family at any other guardians that might see it. In addition, on the flip side, all comments are moderated before they're approved.
I'm talking more about the picture, and my impression is that's live. That goes over.
I apologize. It's almost live, but a teacher always approves a post before it's public. So if a student uploads their math work, the family does not see it until the teacher either approves it or deletes it.
Oh, great, okay, okay, okay.
I'm glad we cleared it up.
I have two other questions. Go to you, why?
So all 37,408 items are pre-approved? Is that what that means?
Yes, and the good thing is, it doesn't take that long to approve it.
It'd take me a long time to approve 37,000.
It's a few years. It's over a period of time, right?
So I have a comment and a question. The comment is, I, so my daughter is Class Dojo, which is basically the same thing. At first, I had the same concerns, but I actually like it, and I think I know, speaking just because now, instead of asking her, "What did you do at school today?", I can say, "Oh, you went to so-and-so today, are you working on this today?" And I do like kind of having updates. The other really valuable thing, I think, for, as a parent, is we get updates on things that are happening, like Pupers School Day, for instance, is coming up, and how we know exactly about that, or they're having an event at the school. We get instant notification of that, and it's a really good way of communicating with parents, that as a parent, I really like. I guess my only long-term concern is with both Seesaw and Class Dojo, they're private companies right now, so eventually, they're going to have to turn a profit some way, so my long-term, my question would be, how long is the contract that you have at Taylor Prairie with them? Is it years?
Here, if we can sign that year by year.
Okay, year by year, okay.
And it, there's a lot of use of the free version.
Okay, yeah.
And then there is some use of the paid version.
So there's all we, okay, then, perfect.
Yep, we're not locked into anything.
Yeah, otherwise, I mean, if that's the case, I really, I think it's, I like it. I don't know if I would like it if I was a middle school student, but for elementary, I think it's perfect.
Aren't they all families have access? 37, huh? 42,000 family visits, so all the families have a chance to visit?
Everyone has the chance. There are some families that have opted out not to be engaged in it.
But they opt out because they don't want to, or they do not have the technology?
I believe everyone who wants it has the technology. I think the ops out are because they don't want another app on their device.
So what's the percent of the 400?
I'm sorry, can you say that?
What's the percent of the 400 of total parents? So it says 400 connected parents. I'm not sure on these students.
Well, there's about 360-some students at Taylor Prairie.
Okay, so we're over 50%.
Correct. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Casey Anika at the Library in Winnipeg, and I'm going to start talking about coding at the elementary level. So coding is being done at all three elementary schools for about 20% of the library curriculum at all three schools. And they are based on, Wisconsin has computer science standards even for the elementary level, and then Lisa noted the ITL standards, the Information Technology Literacy Standards, so those are based around those. We have all done Hour of Code in the past. Winniequa, two, not this year, but two years ago, it happens in December, had a Hour of Code with families. We're hoping to make that an every other year event, so it didn't happen this year. But last year, when we had it, we had over 70 families participate, which was really great. And then at Cottage Grove, third and fourth graders are focused on using Scratch in the library to create animations, so they're learning coding and storytelling elements with that. So that's kind of our quick overview of, like, coding at the elementary level, is our... And then the second piece that I just kind of want to talk about, and I'll have you to answer questions, is that all elementary schools and libraries also have maker spaces. They all look a little bit different in each building, they kind of fit the building's needs, but kind of the focus is focusing on creation rather than just consumption of knowledge, and so how they're sharing it. All of the libraries kind of have different events that happen throughout the year. The top picture up there is from this year, in October, we had a cardboard building challenge, and so students worked in groups to design a building that we then added to our Cardboard City. One of the great things that I think it really adds is voice and choice when we're looking at projects at the elementary level. Sometimes writing a paper is not what the appropriate, like, thing is, or the worksheet, and so sometimes it's designing something with Legos to show a math problem, or every Friday, we have our video announcements. So if you are part of the Winniequa Facebook page that's closed, that's also posted on there, and then it's streamed live in the building, and it's run by our fifth grade students, which you can see in the other picture. And so lots of different options. At Taylor Prairie, I know they also do their, like, Word of the Month, and they'll have an activity that focuses on that, Word of the Month for them. It was a really quick overview of two bigger concepts, but...
I'm just going to make a comment that I think is really important to, for, to start the code deal earlier, especially in the technology, and what we are right now, because this certainly wasn't something that I learned, but it's going to be really important for these students to know that as they grow up, so...
And that's one of the big reasons why we've kind of focused at, like, kindergarten and first grade especially, starting at them, because often we find by the time even they're in second grade, if they haven't been exposed, they often feel like, "Oh, that's not a thing I can do." And coding is something anybody can learn to do. Nobody knows how to do it from, like, just naturally.
My six-year-old knows how to code better than me. How much is that saying?
I know how she knows, she knows quite a bit.
And then, to wrap us up with this presentation, we have Andy from high school.
We've got one of the funnest new tools coming to architecture right now. Our first was introduced to VR headsets via Enscape. It's an addition to Revit, which is cutting edge off where that most commercial buildings are being drawn in and designed in, and we've had access to that for a number of years. But the students have now access to a lot more virtual renderings that give significant feedback. It's, so we ran into it three years ago at an architecture firm called Strang in Madison, and we got to visit them, and a number of students got to run through the VR headset, including, I think they went through, was it the Silvy Building?
No, we went through, I don't remember. There's a couple of buildings.
Sure, so they got to run through a few big buildings that the company had put together, like, as a production facility. And then we kind of figured out that we could probably do this if we had a headset around, and if we had a computer big enough to run this, but we didn't have that, we didn't have that in our budget, but the IMC bought these things for us, or not for us, this is theirs entirely, but we get to use it on a as, as we can basis. So we'll have, hopefully, we had this two weeks ago, so we're relatively new on this process, but still, it's pretty intuitive. And they spend a lot of the time learning architecture and the big concepts, and the details that go into building the models, and this is just a really awesome feedback opportunity for them. So this is what they design in. So on the left, you've got a floor plan view, so you can look at the different things going on, or you've got some 3D views that you can look around in, and this gives you a good idea and concept, and this is what Evan Drew himself here, he's in the architecture class, so this is what he designed and got to see, and you can drop some cameras in and get some okay views of things.
Wait, is he in there now?
He is going to be in there in just a second.
I'm actually already in there, but...
Yeah, you'll be able to see it. So like, I can take a picture and see what's going on here, and then make it realistic, and it does a pretty good job of that. But if we go into our Enscape add-in here, then, oh, you are 100% in, I just got to jump over to you.
That's you?
So then this is what he sees. So I'll turn it over to him to walk, if you want to direct him through this, you can as well.
Yeah, go through that, that door down here. Yeah, go right in there. And then turn around so you can see what it looks like outside.
So it's just big.
Oh, there's nothing out there.
Yeah, it's just showing the area that he put as a site plan.
Okay.
You could put more modeling out there.
Can you walk in the door?
And it gives you feedback based off your height, so you have...
Wait, wait, how do you go up the stairs? Go up the stairs.
So it's got, it's a BIM software, building information models, so it's got all this information pre-built in.
Oh, but you don't have to step up the stairs.
Nope, nope. So he's got a little walk...
Oh, I wanted to see you step, okay.
He can walk around, so he's got a perimeter around him right now that we set up right here.
Can I see that?
No. But if you walk towards an edge, it'll give him, like, a warning, it'll turn blue and then red, and say, like, "Stop moving right now, otherwise you're going to run into something." So you set that up ahead of time.
I can walk up the doors.
So you can get a really good feedback on, like, a quick design that you do, if it's not fully fleshed out, you can still jump into it and get feedback on size and proportion, and make big changes or small changes accordingly. Maybe you need another foot here where the end table is by the bed, or maybe you need to shrink that up because it's got too much empty space. So it gives a lot of quick feedback that way. And it's one thing to look at plans and pictures and views, but this is, this is a very new and cool concept that I think will change how we, we see and interact with some of these spaces, and it can really tune up your design.
Can we do some like real-time modifications?
Sure. And you can create and generate walkthroughs that you could have as like a visual thing. We had one as a backup here in case this failed. So that's in PowerPoint here as well. And you can do real-time modification as well. So let me see if I can drag it left and right. So where you're, go to the kitchen. All right, so I need to close one of these. Let's see, I need this bigger. All right, so there's the kitchen. Drag this left. So I could take this and nudge it over. You can see that that's a pretty bad design, but you can get real-time modification on whether or not that is going to be beneficial for you. And how this is being used in architecture now is usually the architects have a good idea of what's going on and they're trying to present their ideas to the consumer and see their feedback and information. And it will get directly to your height because it has the base offset. So you can have your exact experience with it, which is really cool. The lighting, you can create like, his lights that are in there are actually turned on and they have lumens associated with them. It's a pretty crazy program. Not Enscape, that's really cool too, it looks nice, but Revit itself is. Yeah, you can change the time of day. So he'd probably have to increase his lighting loads in a few spots here. So you can see this.
With all this real time, if you actually hit something in there, would it hurt?
Yeah, it's got barrier zones up, right? Yeah. Yeah, so you have any questions for Evan or Evan go anyplace?
Now, at my age, this kind of technology blows my mind.
Sure.
Because I remember as a teacher, my challenges were chalk and eraser. And be able to have Scotch tape to tape the broken film.
Sure, and they still spend a lot of time with paper and pens in the architecture class. This is just a tool. A few of the things in the PowerPoint, quick. This is what we just showed you, they could modify that. But you can get really cool landscaping overall. This is the, like this computer is pretty intense to be able to run this software. It's got to have a dedicated graphics card to do that. And that's a little beyond the capabilities of most even decent computers. And the students can get certified in Revit program as well. So it's a, yeah, he's industry certified in Revit for a certified user. So that's pretty cool. And he's going into architecture next year unless he changes his plans. And this was our backup walkthrough. Yeah, so. Questions?
And more, as you may recall, so EUA, who was designing our new school, uses the Revit program. And so in one of the presentations they made, as we're trying to, they use that exact feature to look at the time of day, so we could see where the, you know, the sun is in the morning and, and you know, based on the structure where the building is at, so.
Our architects are using.
Yes.
In placement of the building, right?
Exactly, yeah.
And they'll put buildings around it.
It's not just slide rule and pencil and paper.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, next item, business services report, Jared.
Uh, yes, so as it is written in the board docs, we do have a guest from McKinstry, Trenton, who has worked for the district. And so just a little overview of this. So the district has done three phases with McKinstry. And so phase one was done prior to 2010, where the district came in and analyzed a lot of different projects, pretty much what we classify as low-hanging fruits to help with energy efficiency and sustainability. At that time, the district had a choice between, with Act 32 with Wisconsin, that you could actually exceed your revenue limits for this. But phase one, at that time, was only you had to, you had a one opportunity. So you couldn't issue debt that would have continued to. So part of that, when we entered into the contract with McKinstry, they had to be a performance contractor, and which means that they have to guarantee that based on what they told you was going to happen by replacing lights or water fixtures, that you're truly getting those savings. And so part of that is they have to give us a report. So this report is for phase two and phase three because phase one has fallen off. And phase two and phase three, actually, we had issued debt for these. And so we do get to exceed our revenue limit to pay off the debt. And that amount is actually reduced by the utility savings that we get. So for example, just easy math, if we had a debt payment of a hundred thousand dollars and we saved fifty thousand dollars, the excess of amount that we can add on our revenue limits would be just fifty thousand dollars. So however, if the last budget with the Walker administration, Act 32 was completely taken away for a hundred years. So we asked McKinstry to come and walk through and give you a little overview. They're the experts in the verification. If we do publish this in the paper, when we publish our budgets in the annual meeting, it's all there. We have to send this information on to DPI as well to continue to be compliant. So I'll turn it over to Trenton.
Sure, thank you. That was about three-quarters of what I was going to say.
I wanted to look smart.
All the, all the smart and good-looking people in our office are busy tonight, so you're just like. So I don't know if you've seen the documents that we prepare. Has it been shared with the board? Like, all right, so there's two different documents. One is a single page, well, it's two pages, front and back. I didn't print copies hard one because we're trying to use a sample. So that is the report that we submit to DPI. So this information is taken and uploaded to the DPI website. And then they review it for any errors and things like that, or anything that might seem out of place. So in essence, this is a condensed version of the larger packet of information. And it basically hits the highlights of the measurement and verification that we do. The most important thing is what you actually realized in utility savings compared to what our guarantee was for the project. And so that's right at the top. There's a line that says expected utility savings, that's our guarantee. And then the realized utility savings is what we measured and verified that you actually realized as a result of the projects that you implemented. And then below that are all the different facility improvement measures that we did for each phase. And then the key performance indicators that are the main points of utility, or production of utility savings out of each of those facility improvement measures. So I'm not going to read through all those.
Trent, would you, because we have an audience that's listening and it isn't up, even though it is loading, would you just give the two numbers, the seventy and eighty-five?
Yeah, yeah, so for phase two and three, as Jared indicated, phase one was for just one year. So these are, these two, second and third phase were part of a borrowing. And so the state requires that we measure and verify that, well, we're meeting our guarantee every year. So that's what this report is doing, is verifying that. And so that number, the expected utility savings is seventy thousand ninety-two dollars. So from the two projects that we did, we guaranteed that you would save on an annual basis over seventy thousand dollars off of your utility bill. What we've actually measured and verified for 2019 was that you saved eighty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. So fifteen thousand dollars in excess of what we guaranteed.
So again, eighty-five.
That's a significant number for six buildings. And I think that, I'm not sure what percentage of your total utility budget that was at the time. Maybe was it about fifteen or twenty percent of the total utility budget that those two projects took off? So that's, you know, money that you can use for operating and other things once the debt is being satisfied.
I think that number is fifteen percent, twenty percent of our electric bill, not utility bill.
Well, there are some water conservation measures as well. So it would, it would be some savings from water.
Okay, because our utility, electric, and natural gas is about, is over seven hundred thousand, that's like seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so it's ten percent?
Yeah, it's ten percent, yeah.
Okay.
And just for comparison, in 2009, we were at one point one million.
Okay, so four hundred thousand less than.
Some, yeah, three hundred and fifty thousand less. Some of that's due to drop in natural gas prices.
Yeah.
But part of that.
And then if you're having trouble sleeping at night and you want some help to get into the actual report, and it will tell you for each facility improvement measure, what we actually did to verify the savings from that improvement measure. For example, it may say that we trended data on a variable frequency drive to know how much that, the motor that it was controlling, how much it was actually, how much power it was actually using compared to the motor that was previously there that did not have a variable frequency drive on it, allowing it to run at a lower rate. So that's just, that's all explained, all of our calculations and everything. All the documentation is in this report, so.
So because these reports are required because of the state law and how we finance and so on, how many of these reports are required? Just one, or do we have to do this annually, or?
It's an annual report that we do to make sure that you're, because we have a guarantee in place. So we want to make sure that you're actually realizing the savings that we guaranteed. And for some reason, there was a shortfall, then we, McKinstry is obligated to write you a check for the difference of the energy that you didn't see in the savings, if that was the case. So because you're, you're required to take the savings and use it against the borrowing until the borrowing is satisfied, that's why we have to measure and verify every year until that borrowing is being paid for.
Because in our prior, with the phase one, which we did borrow for, there was a certain point we could terminate the guarantee. We no longer have the guarantee, but then we're also not paying you. But we can't do that under the current, with the current BIMs, or is that?
Technically, you're not supposed to, yeah, you're supposed to do the measurement and verification as long as the borrowing is in place.
I see. So we don't have that up?
Like you said, the reason.
That makes sense, but.
Reason you could take it off of the first one is because there was no borrowing. It was just put on the levy for one year and then it fell off.
Right, so the first one, in fact, we did that after so many years of verification. We dropped the guarantee contract, you know, satisfied that we were making the savings that we were.
Absolutely.
That were guaranteed. But we can't do that with this one?
Right.
This is a twenty-year? That's her?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay.
I just wanted to specifically thank Trent and the team. They've been attending the sustainability committee. McKinstry, what did I say?
You said Trent.
I said Trent, that's the gentleman, yeah. And his team, okay? For, from McKinstry, is that? For coming to the sustainability committee meetings and providing insight and support. And also for your support of the Minor Corp. Education Foundation regularly and consistently. So again, really provided a team effort to the district, I think that's been real important to us. And I kind of remember when we took those first steps, and it was a little scary, but it's been a really positive experience.
Good feedback, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Good. Have a good evening.
You too. All right, moving on to superintendent report.
Okay, have two items. So just update the ad hoc school naming committee. I have a link to our webpage that summarizes the work that was completed at our last meeting. The committee developed a number of considerations to be used to help frame the process and acceptable names for the new school, and also developed the survey. So we have the survey out now to the community. And as we generate those ideas, the committee will take that and help that in towards a recommendation moving forward.
So in terms of a timeframe, you, your timeframe, as I understand it, is for this, what's your thought about when that committee will complete their work?
Right, so the charter is that it must have a final recommendation by July.
And in terms of, I haven't really looked at the survey, I'm really sorry about that. But in terms of kind of what you're surveying, just so the community can know more about that, that includes trying to get information about naming the new school and is there additional information in that survey so that we can encourage people to do that?
Yes.
And that's what?
Regarding the new school.
And other information that you're surveying? What I'm trying to do is, is help the community when they see it, instead of saying, I don't know the time, to be aware of the impact they can have as community members. How long do you think it'll take to finish the survey? And what kind of information do we expect to get back from that that's valuable to us?
Okay, so there's background information on the survey that explains that, and that is one question.
But you have to read the survey to do it. I've talked about somebody who picks up the mail and says, oh, whoops, throws it. I'm trying to get us to see this document and encourage the community through this meeting to do this survey and how important that is to us. A little more information.
I'm not sure of the say, all the information is on the webpage.
I guess what I'm saying is, this is an opportunity to take two minutes to tell the community verbally. I'm talking about the seniors, the senior board, if they happen to see this. And other people see it and say, we encourage you to do this survey because this is what we need, this is what it will give us, and this is how we plan to use it. Three, just three quick questions. Response? Sorry.
So the committee, of course, is charged with making recommendation to the board with regard to the name of the school. So one of the parts of the process is to provide the other community feedback regarding that. And so we, we're trying to make the survey readily available so that community members can submit their ideas and suggestions. And then from there, the next step, the committee will be looking at those and will record out next month on the next step in the process.
And the information that you plan to glean from the survey includes?
Maybe it would help to clarify, the survey is really a description of the things to think about with regard to the name of the new school, right? That that's what you're talking about? And when you click on that link, that's where it takes you to, and it lists the kinds of things to know about the new building. And then there's simply a place to write your name, suggestions, along with your reason for opposing the name.
Okay, so one of our goals is to use this survey to get suggestions for naming the building. The new building, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the second piece is sharing the tentative timeline regarding, with regards to the process for the high school principal search. And so I've laid out to you, wanted to share that with you this evening. And then later this week, we'll make sure that we share that out with staff as well as parents so they understand, and we'll keep you updated along the way with regard to the process.
I just had a question about, I actually like the Apple tracks on the, I like the descriptions over there. I think those are really good. First round of interviews, will that, I assume that will include some high school teaching staff and maybe clerical staff? And I mean, as far as who conducts the interviews? Or is that just at the end? I see at the end, the finalists.
First round, phone screening.
Oh, okay, right, it's this phone screening.
Yeah, so that'd be a small.
Thanks, sorry. And then the second round was, it could also be done virtually, but.
Depending on the applicants and location and so on.
You might have to have people involved. So is the first opportunity for a teaching staff to be involved in that final round, or?
As far as meeting candidates, yes.
But some of them could be involved in watching the virtual interviews, or what's? I just wonder, how early their involvement takes place at the end?
Sure, well, they've already been involved. So we've had focus group meetings with staff members. And that has helped frame the actual posting and description, as well as, you know, types of questions that will be in the screening. But as far as meeting will be the last piece.
And how many finalists do you usually think about at the end of this? Three?
Ten, typically two to three. Ten, typically two to three.
So this is like an entirely new process, effectively?
For hiring a principal?
Well, for, yeah.
Yeah.
Because have we used phone interviews before to screen?
We have it on the most recent ones, no.
Okay, so that's new. I'm just gonna mention, you know, that's a, you can't visually see a person or how they respond to you when you're talking to them, and, yeah, it's one thing to do an interactive facial, use the detail and whatever, or Skype. I'm a little concerned about, let's say you had, would you, how many candidates do you anticipate?
It's still open, so I, you know, I don't know what that number will be. So I understand phone screening is an opportunity to have a wider number of candidates that we can initially to, you know, that's in addition to reviewing, you know, the online, you know, the actual written application. Okay, so it's really an additional step to help have a contact with a larger number of candidates, as opposed to reading through applications and trying to select, you know, six or seven or eight just from written applications, you can have phone screen with a larger number, and that is additional information besides what's in the written application. So it's really an additional step. Most interview processes generally would have two rounds of interviews, this actually, the phone part is actually a third round.
But you could eliminate an applicant based on a phone interview?
Well, we'll use that to screen, sure.
So you'll be selecting the candidates for the second round from that, and how, I mean, I don't know if you know how many, but roughly, how many are you talking about?
Yeah, typically that'd be, you know, five to eight candidates.
Okay. And so at that point, when it says virtually, I assume that'd be by Skype then, so you can actually see them at that point, and they can see you. So who is involved in conducting the second round?
We're still working through exactly who.
I'm just thinking that might be a place where you could have some teaching staff involved too. I'm not sure, I'm totally comfortable with saving that for the last round, I just encourage you to think about that more.
I agree with that. Again, part of it is, and it's, I know it's new and we're working through that, but if a phone interview is just to validate that you have all the information that you would need in a basic application process, and maybe you didn't get all of it on the application, you're giving those people an opportunity to supplement to that information process, and everybody gets the same opportunity, but then, we have pretty clear criteria that moves us from first round phone interviews to second round interviews.
Yes.
Okay. And then, again, I mean, this is April 6th, it's less than a month away, I'm a little concerned that we don't kind of have a structure for those interviews in terms of participants. Who's gonna be involved in?
So the other thing I sort of remind the board members, we have engaged, you know, the ALMA group to facilitate and work with us on this process, and so one of the things that they have worked with us on is not only, you know, you know, the timeline here, but developing the criteria, as you mentioned, exactly the criteria that will be, you know, based upon in screening candidates and every step of the way. Not unlike, you know, the process that this board has engaged in the past in first superintendent searches, very similar.
And I know phone interviews are far more common now, I mean, that seems to be the rule rather than the exception.
It's really an additional step.
Sure, it is. But it takes some.
It's usual, initial thought?
Not necessarily. Okay. I really like the information on the application, it's really good, I can see the value of.
Yeah, and that's a really, I appreciate you pointing that out, I mean, that was a really important part. You know, we certainly took, you know, our, the job, the board approved job description, that's an essential part, but to go into the actual criteria, and that's where the teacher input already has had an impact, and from those focus group, you know, discussions we've had, and to help set the criteria forward. So, you know, that's a really important thing, and it's very much in line with what we're doing with our, our training for our teacher process with ALMA as well, to make sure that we're eliminating, you know, bias and everything is criterion-based, and what it is that we're actually screening for. So, so as we move along, I'll certainly continue to share more information.
All right. We'll move on to board reports. First, ad hoc sustainability committee, Peter.
The committee met on the February 24th. We talked about several items, first with the Dane, what do we call that, the Dane County Business Area Business Managers Meeting, which was on the 21st, at the Sustainability Committee with the help of the, with Jared and the county coordinator Kathy Koons helped organize, and we had 12 districts participating, and three districts presented sort of the things that they had been doing relative to sustainability and focused on a lot of things they've been doing to save money. And the idea was to get all of the business managers sort of up to speed with the resources that are available and some of the ideas, things that can go around, so that they can work together, because the more, the more we can steal from each other in terms of ideas and process and so on, the better off, the easier it is for everybody there, particularly there's so many opportunities. People work on this in different directions, different aspects, I think we can all work, all improve faster. We talked about the district's waste disposal and our current contract, and the students who they were talking, were concerned with and talking about cafeteria waste. Cafeteria waste is actually the, typically the biggest waste stream from any school there is, and, and we talked about that with some of the, you know, styrofoam and the fact that we lose 400 trays a year and we have to replace them, and the possibility of refillable water bottle stations and so on, it was an interesting discussion. We touched on some of the other things that we're trying to move forward on going forward. And our next meeting, I don't think we scheduled this, will be Tuesday, the 24th, if I have the date right. And we're carrying on. Susan?
Can I just ask, the one meeting I was at there was when the students were presenting, they were talking a lot about the trays, and I just wondered, have we done anything about getting rid of the styrofoam trays and going to class?
Yeah. It was very interesting.
We're using upper supply.
Right, right.
It was very interesting, yeah, the interesting that, yeah, I should have mentioned that, that the students had brought that up, and we'd already, at the district, and Jared had already sort of made plans to work on that, work through that, and get rid of the styrofoam waste on the street.
Good, well, thanks. No, just keep them to, get them to return.
Yeah.
He had a bunch of really good ideas, the student discussion was great.
Yeah, and like, like I've said with this, there's just so much opportunity, and there's so much observation, and so many people interested in it, it's a little hard to even sort through and, and, you know, get to places where you can move forward, because there's so many different opportunities.
I've been impressed with the cascading of ideas.
Right.
If one thing leads to another.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Peter. TLE Committee, Eric?
I was absent last night, Susan Fox was there in my place, so I don't know, Susan, if you want to just keep it brief.
Yeah, I'll just talk briefly about, we, our agenda was, we had, at the previous meeting, we had developed the beginnings of an equity statement for the district, that's sort of a rough draft, and we, at last night's meeting, we had some people who weren't there at the first one, and we proceeded to tear apart a lot of what we'd done before, but add to it, I thought it was really a good meeting, I really, I really enjoyed, because we just kind of had a, an extensive discussion about the ideas and came up with some statements we wanted to keep for sure, and some bolded ideas, and decided we would have staff in the interest of time, put those things together into a statement and then send it out, so we could send ideas, and then hopefully by April, which is the last, would be the last formal meeting of that committee, we would approve a draft that could then come to the board, and there'll be some work following that. And they, people were interested enough that they said, if we needed to have, you had a second meeting in April, they'd be up for that, because they wanted, felt like they wanted some closure on this, and it was just a really good discussion, and I think very thoughtful comments on the part of committee members, so it was great. And then we, as far as a policy, Dan had some different insights on the policy, that we felt like we need more involvement from more people, and that'll be done probably more next year, that it's better to take time to get it right. Anyway, the next meeting is April 14th at 6 o'clock. And they always, I guess they also had, we talked a little bit about that, because we're winding up the year, the one thing that might be good to think about for next year, even if all the same people are on it, but would be to have sort of a think-through of schedule of topics, because the committee charge is broad, and this, and doing this equity statement has been a lot of hard work here, here at the end, and taking up some meetings, but to maybe make, think of a schedule of things that the board would like the committee to consider, the committee would like to consider at the beginning, try to kind of, to maybe get more things done in a year, but it's a good meeting.
I would, I would just add, it was just an excellent meeting, it was really interesting to watch, and the other thing that I think was incredibly helpful was, as the language was changing, it was up on the board, so you could see it, and what was actually happening, rather than just kind of make guesses of, what did you just change and how'd you change it? And it was typed by someone other, I mean, Dan and Shelby were both working, and that's what allowed the chairman to be, really be involved and watch the discussion, which I think was originally, I had said, you probably need a facilitator, but it worked well to have that team approach, just so, I mean, that was helpful to be able to watch, and I think it helped the committee be able to sit back and think and discuss in a more focused manner. Anyway, it was a good meeting to watch. And then, Andrew, I just have, I noticed that we don't have a report from the Education Foundation, and I think Dan, was it that meeting yesterday, can we make sure that comes forward in April, because I think there's major things coming through that this board isn't aware of, that I think would be helpful for them to be knowledgeable about? I should have mentioned the superintendent report.
It'll be a future agenda topic, too.
Yes.
All right, move on to possible action items. 2020, 2021 preliminary certified staffing plan.
Okay, so again, we titled this preliminary plan because it is described, some of the final FTEs still continue to vary, we have a really, it's essentially a status quo plan, the number one criteria we look at, of course, is class size, and we look at the number of teaching positions, and then we always have variance in some of the, you know, specialty areas of where we have part-time positions and so on. Ultimately, of course, the board approves every teacher contract, and so, but the idea of approving this is just so you have kind of a roadmap of what to expect, that there aren't new positions brought forward without your knowledge. And so in this case, one change from what you saw last month was at the kindergarten level at Winnicott. We initially proposed four sections, we knew that, you know, depending on growth, that met the class size goal if we didn't have any new additional students moving in. Well, kindergarten is one of those areas that, you know, not every one of our students attends 4K in the district, and so our staff works very hard at trying to track, you know, early on, which students are gonna be attending in kindergarten that might be new students, and as Angie and her staff have tracked that, the numbers are up slightly, and we just feel at this point, we have enough data to show that we're gonna be confident that we really need that fifth section. As we know, with, the last thing we're gonna do, have to add that late in the game and worry about hiring later, and we also know that we get a large number of open enrollment applications at 5K, so we can always balance the class size if need be, you know, with some additional there. So, so that's the one major change in teaching positions from what you saw last month, and then the other piece is something we've talked about, is the principal position for the Cottage Grove School principal position for when the new school opens, the idea of hiring for next year for the planning, and so I've got a little bit of a written rationale about that, we've talked about it, you know, some, and I think, you know, one of the things I just, to kind of summarize, what would this person do, one of the things I've learned as we researched, what does it really mean to do a planning year? Well, the reality is they're acting as a principal, you know, really a co-principal with the staff, and, you know, you heard tonight, you know, some of the presentations on the technology, and how you see there's some differences between Taylor Prairie and Winnicott with some of the applications. That's just one small example of why it's so important to work with staff, and there's gonna be a lot of transition work to do, as all of our first grade staff from Taylor Prairie move into the new school, coordinating with the second grade staff, what software are they using, what about shared books, and then of course, you know, more importantly, planning, you know, for instruction, and so, you know, we have in there the fiscal piece that this would be covered with the levy, you know, from the operational funds for, you know, go towards that new school, and so, I am making the recommendation as part of the staffing plan that we do move forward with hiring that principal for next year.
Dan, is there supposed to be an attachment on here?
There is. It's under the admin content, there are three attachments.
See him?
Okay, me, I just don't have it.
On the possible action.
You have it?
Yeah, you're not, are you logged in as?
Yes. I will re-log, I get it, I get it.
Maybe you need your code or?
All right, I, I don't know what happened, I'm gonna try to redo it, but I wasn't seeing anything for some reason.
Make sure you can authenticate as your instance in the public.
So, are you trying to tell me how to code P?
You're the public.
Well, he's lucky, did anybody else have any questions?
All right, never mind, forget it. I got it.
Okay. See, anybody else had any questions or concerns before Eric?
No, I just think the coding thing is a real good idea. Got it, thanks.
All right, so.
I approve approval of the 2020, 2021 preliminary certified staffing plan as presented.
Second.
First, second, any more discussion? Here and now, all in favor? All right. All opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to discussion items, school safety drills report.
Okay, so in 2018, Act 143 was created that with regard to the, the school safety plans, if you recall, the Department of Justice had, you know, significant grant money available for school districts with regard to safety, and one of the requirements was that we report out to the board annually on at least one of the safety drills that is done in each school. So a year ago, we brought forth this report to the board, and I dropped the ball a little bit, didn't realize this on an annual basis, every year we had to present, bring these to the board. So you'll see these, reports are dated back in October, in the fall, when our principals conducted them, and so what we just need for the record, we don't need action, the minutes need to reflect that the board has received these reports, and then we'll send a copy of the minutes into the Department of Justice to justify that, yes, in fact, these report, these drills were conducted and the board received a copy of the reports. And so from this point on, it'll be an annual thing, every December we'll bring these forward to you, it's supposed to be on Friday, January 1st.
Okay.
Any questions or concerns? Okay. All right, moving on to our facilities plan update.
Okay, so you've got just a summary, not, a lot has happened, you know, in the last month, we know that we have one big piece, is we did get the building plan for the new building approved by the state this past week, so the final plan.
The state has to approve?
They did. There's lots, yeah, state approval for a number, so even the renovations require state approval.
Really? DTI or?
No, the Department of Administration.
DOA?
Yeah.
That's interesting.
And then, one other piece that I'll mention is, we just added today the door hanger that will, has been, will be produced, that will let the people in the neighborhood know that construction will be taking place, so we've attached that, you know, so you can see what that communication is. And then, of course, the last priority issue is that we still need to finalize a developers' agreement with the Village of Cottage Grove, that's a work in progress. a work in progress.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to know, and I'm kind of concerned that we, you know, we've, actually, the decision that we've made is to, that has been made, is to delay the renovations on the Cottage Grove Elementary, and that's because we may need to find additional funds. We don't know, we may need to find additional funds, because we haven't yet reached a developers agreement with the village, and it looks like the infrastructure costs that are being requested in the developers agreement exceed what we anticipated, and we're gonna, might come up short, and we're gonna have to find a significant chunk of money to, in order to close this deal and reach a developers agreement for the new site. And unfortunately, we have to, you know, Cottage Grove School, I think, is where we have the biggest spend for renovations, so it's the biggest place where we can, we can find money if we need to move it forward. And so, that's the delay. I hate to see the delay, but.
What is, what is the timeline of the delay?
So, so we have actually communicated with our staff and families that the renovations that were scheduled to happen this summer for Cottage Grove School have been moved back to the following summer.
So, almost a...
The entire year.
An entire year.
Right. So, you know, on the positive side, that means this year, they will still hold summer school there as planned, and so, we initially reported that was gonna happen. But, so at this point, there's tentatively planned for the following year, but as Peter said, then that gives us, you know, the flexibility to see where we're at in budget at that point.
So, if we have enough, see if we have enough funds left over after these additional charges from the...
Infrastructure.
From the community out there.
Yeah.
All right.
So, the, actually, about the door hanger?
Yes.
So, where is this gonna go?
To the neighborhood adjacent to the new school.
Okay.
Residence.
Anything there? Are any questions on a future meeting?
Yes, so, thank you. So, for the entire board, we have our next workshop next Monday at 5:30, earlier than normal, as we continue a discussion on long-range budget planning.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Absolutely.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. That never gets old.